I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes, Senator.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Dr. Sully?
Here.
Mr. Dangler?
Here. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just as it is.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and post as required by law.
Presentations, we have none this evening. Reading and approval of the previous minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the November 26th. So moved.
Second. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
I've had your.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing and final consideration. This is the second reading of ordinance 1919 entitled Ordinance Amending Article 325, Traffic of Code of the City of Long Branch Parking of Commercial Vehicles, Residential Parking and Regulation of Semi-Public Property. This ordinance was introduced November 26, 2019. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this ordinance only, please step to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Robin Camp, 15 River Gateway, Long Branch. For the past nine years, we've had a commercial vehicle emblazoned with the words "organic carpet cleaner" parked directly in front of our house, morning, noon, all night long, for the past nine years. The owner of the vehicle uses it occasionally. He parks it directly in front of our house on our residential street because he's actually prohibited from parking his vehicle in his own condominium complex where he lives because his complex passed a regulation prohibiting commercial vehicles from parking on their property because they don't want to have to look at commercial vehicles morning, noon, and night. So therefore, for the past nine years, we've had to look at his vehicle which is parked directly in front of my house. He doesn't even live on our street. At some point over the last eight months, his vehicle has been in an accident where his front grille is damaged and he no longer has a headlight. He's driven around like this for eight months. He also, for the past two years, has had an expired inspection sticker. Yet he continues to drive it in the daytime and in the nighttime. In fact, just the other night, he was behind me and I knew it was him because he only had one headlight. I'm wondering if this new ordinance will put an end to this unsightly nightmare that all of my neighbors, mostly all of my neighbors on my street constantly complain about for years now. Will the permits once issued allow the vehicle's owner to park on any street in town or just the one on which that they live on? In other words, the address issued on the license, will that be? Will that, will the permit be issued to that address? And will they have to park it on their own street? Because I don't believe, in this case, he doesn't live on my street. So I saw that this was going to be addressed this evening, and as I said, I don't know, did I mention, this is nine years now? I figured that this would be as good a time as any to try and get some sort of resolution to this. I know everybody, you know, says, "Well, the poor guy has to work for a living." But when I tell you the truck is there, nine times out of 10, it's very rarely used. And again, he doesn't live on our street, so.
So Robin, I think it will, but I'm going to ask, I think it will, and I think it will in your particular case as well, but I'm going to ask our city attorney, they'll just articulate it a little better than me because, you know, we're getting these questions.
Short answer is yes, it will. Long answer is that it sounds to me like there's a number of other issues that, under our current ordinance, before this ordinance was adopted, that would probably allow us to ticket that vehicle and get it off the street because, obviously, if it's on the street and it doesn't ever, it's not properly inspected, it's damaged, it's there for periods of time and it doesn't move, all of those things could lead to it being ticketed or towed. So I don't know, that's an enforcement question and that's probably for the chief or for the traffic bureau, but I don't know the answer to that. But the short form is that this should help your problem.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the accident that he got into and the inspection sticker are secondary to the initial problem which happened many years ago and continues to happen. You know, the irony here, to me, is that his own residence, his complex where he lives, doesn't want commercial vehicles parked in there, so he parks in front of my house. I mean, the irony is absurd, so. Whatever you could do to address this finally, to get some sort of resolution, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Willie Thompson. I live at 19 Eastwood Avenue, Long Branch, and I feel the same way this lady does. Only, my property is wide enough in the front that it can hold four of those trucks, and a lot of times, it's four parked out there, and I can't even look across the street. I have pictures that I went to the expense of using my camera, enlarged them, I got five sets. So if you want to have a look at them and see what it looked like from my front yard trying to look across the street, plus the property value will fall dramatically. Who would want to buy a house with all these commercial trucks parked there? One other issue I'd like to ask about, this says number two. Does this say, is this number two an addendum to number one above it in the paragraph, which was the old ordinance? Or it replaces the old ordinance?
So number two is, this is an addition to the old ordinance?
So the old ordinance still stands?
Correct. So there's, so the old, so for everybody's edification, the old ordinance barred the parking of certain vehicles above a gross weight anywhere in the city, and that remains in effect. What we did was we expanded the definition to, for our commercial vehicles to be not just vehicles that were over a certain weight, but vehicles that were commercial in nature, either registered commercial or had lettering on it, or, you know, we put a pretty expansive definition into, tried to capture, you know, a vehicle, a van that might have, that's clearly a work van, but might be registered as a passenger vehicle. So we expanded it.
Yes, and I was wondering, how would you be able to determine a vehicle, one of those vans, how would you be able to estimate it weighs 8,000 pounds? Most times, it's not lettered on the side of the truck like the larger vehicles are. It doesn't, these are vans, long vans, you know, like 24 feet.
And that's why the number two that you were talking about doesn't have anything to do with the weight class?
So regardless of the.
Regardless of the weight class, it includes all vehicles that are either registered commercial or have lettering or design showing the name or contact information about commercial services. So we've kind of tried to expand it as much as we can.
Okay.
And I, once again, I would need the traffic bureau to tell you what, you know, what they do to determine what the gross weight of a vehicle is. But some of it has to do with the vehicle class and how it's registered and all of those things.
Yeah, I did some homework on that. I went to motor vehicle and asked them, "How can you determine the weight of a vehicle?" They said, "Let's just stamp on the side of the truck." They would have to open the door and look at the panel on the side of the track. I don't think the police officers should be opening somebody's vehicle just to determine if it weighs 8,000 pounds.
Which is why we expanded the definition. Because we, because that was one of the issues specifically, in fact, that may be the first issue that we were struggling with, which the police came to us and said, "We have this problem," right? That unless the gross weight is appropriately marked on the outside of the vehicle, it's hard for us to tell, and we need, you know, a better definition.
All right, so one other thing that, because back there later that was before me, all these vans have an address. One have an address in London, New Jersey, one has the address across town. None of them, the sign that's painted on the side where it says what they do and the phone number and all that, addresses is not in 19 Eastwood Avenue. In fact, the house next to me, 21, I think it is, there's five vehicles that drivers come and go on a regular basis from their residence, five vehicles. Not only the three panel trucks, they pick up at a regular passenger car. Five, I don't know how five people live over there, but they come out the same building almost every day.
This ordinance will fix that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any need a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So moved. This is the third reading of ordinance 1919 entitled, and ordinance amending Article 325, Traffic of the Code of the City of Long Branch Parking of Commercial Vehicles, Residential Parking and Regulation of Semi-Public Property. I need a motion to adopt the third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Ordinance for introduction, we have none. Public portion, I need a motion to open the public portion of this meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? So moved. If there's anyone who would, in the audience, was a comment to make, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record and speak clearly. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening. My name is Anita Kraybering, and I live on 161 Garrett Drive. I received an email from Anita, from Councilwoman Dr. Vogt, and she stated, a woman thanking me for the, thanking me for the making the beaches accessible. Now, while we're in it, I thought that, I would like to ask Dr. Vogt and as well as the other council members and Mayor Plone, if the beaches are going, and the surface around it to make it accessible, will it be preserved during the winter months? And, again, I thank Dr. Vogt for working, I thank all of you on the disability committee that, to keep up the good work in making, making the beaches accessible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Donna Peterson, 104 Rockwell Avenue in Long Branch. I haven't been here for a while, this is all kind of new to me, but I'm glad we have a different mayor of this town now. I lived in this town for a long time, and I didn't realize we had so much homeless people. And I know Mr. Plone's office, they're trying to do something about it because Snyder didn't care about the homeless after doing my homework. I think the reason that people don't trust the group now is because of what happened in the past. So I think something has to be put in writing or let the people know that something's being done, it's going to be, sorry, my lungitis and allergies. Something has to be done. I know in the past, Mr. Grant had found a house because somebody had given a house to the city, didn't know who went to. What I did, my homework, if I did it correctly, that Snyder gave it to the fire department to use for testing. If I was involved, Mr. Grant knowing that, I would have opened my big mouth, excuse the expression, and done something about it to have it put, for the homeless people in our town. And I apologize for my throat. So, can you let the people know if Long Branch, that something's being done? Because a lot of people don't trust of what happened in the past, and I know it's going to take time to get this started and have, but I know there's got to be some house around here because I can't see these guys leaving six o'clock in the morning, have no place to go afterwards until six o'clock at night, can't look for a job because of the way they're dressed and all this stuff. It's just, it's shocked. So is there any way that we can ask different companies or different places that we can lease their house, fix it up, and I could do some talk and everything like this, get people involved and other people involved to help these people so they can have, say, their own room with a key and do things? I apologize. I was fine earlier. But anything you can do, it takes time, and I know the people are not trusting anybody after what happened last time. Because I did find out that Mr. Snyder didn't care about the homeless in our town. Because when I was going places and people heard that I lived in this part of Long Branch, they did not want to come. They didn't mind going to North Long Branch, Elkhorn, or West End, but they didn't want to come to our part of town because it was disgusting looking. So I was just, and I know it's improving with Mr. Plone's help and everything like this, which takes time, but what can be done more to get a house or something for these homeless people that they can stay, get ready, go look for a job, come back? And another thing that's available is that around town, especially where I live, across the street, there's no yellow on the curves, and people park very, very close to the fire hydrants. And jobs can be given to these guys to go around painting the yellow, be told what to do, have something to do, but they go back to nothing, they have no place to go, until that evening, and then they're out early in the morning. So what can be done about it? I know it takes time, but what can be done about it as soon as possible?
So Donna, I mean, first off, I appreciate your comments and your being here. It's an important issue for us, it's also a complicated one. And we, and, you know, we're working, as I guess you know, both last year and this year, to do as, you know, to do as much as we can. So I can't get specific with some of the things that you're asking, but be it that we're all very concerned, understand the issue, it's very important to us, and we're trying. So as you know, you know, we have the, you know, with the help of many of the volunteers here in the city and with some of the churches in the past and present, as well as, you know, our own place at the community gardens, we're trying to do our best I can. So we're aware of it and we'll keep working on it.
Yeah, because I know when you and Dr. Sully was on the other team, you did try to do things, but because there's only two against the other people, and I think to my knowledge, unless I'm wrong, the other people were afraid to stand up to Mr. Snyder. I'm not. I stood up and said a lot of things because I had the facts. But the trouble is, though, is just the idea, I think if the people knew more of what was going on, we would push. And I did get mad at Mr. Grant for not letting me know because he knows I have a big mouth and I could get everything done because I get the facts. And if I do make a mistake, I, you know.
And you're right, one of the, you know, one of the issues is getting the word out.
Yeah.
We're trying to do that as much as possible as well. I mean, a lot of people don't, obviously, don't have access to computers and so forth. So, you know, we're trying to do what we can, and, you know, we have the code blue on the digital signs, and any ideas you or anybody else may have are welcome.
It tells you, when I heard about it, I never even knew what code blue meant, and I lived in this town for over 20 years. And when I saw the guys working, I thought they were just going to visit somebody's house or going home or something like that. I never knew we had that many people. And if I'd known that, I would have pushed with Mr. Grant to make sure that house did not get put for the fire department, for the guys homeless. If they could have their own room and a key, because when they have to leave six o'clock in the morning, can't come back, where they go to get freshened up to go look for a job? Who's going to hire them? And then I thought about it, that there's a lot of curves, especially where I live, across the street, there's no yellow, and people park close to that fire hydrant. So if they can, they have a job to go do, but they have no place to go back to work. I mean, not work, I mean, home and all this stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Is the time up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're requesting one minute notification. Vincent Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Little different tonight, folks, but it's a matter that has to be addressed. On Thursday, December 5th, a very disturbing site appeared on the grounds of City Hall Complex. An indoor nativity scene was on the ground, shockingly towered by another seasonable display. The other display was nine feet high by seven and a half feet wide with a value of $1,700. The nativity scene was at best 17 and a half inches high and 23 inches wide. The infant of reverence in the nativity scene lay on the ground with burlap underneath it, approximately three and a half inches high and four inches wide. The photo was posted on the West End Long Branch NJ Watchdog site that very same day, December 5th, and the comments exploded. Some of the lighter comments expressed being insulted by the city. Many of the harsher comments, justifiably so, expressed that the city embarrassed its citizens with such inappropriateness in the displays. The indoor manger was on display atop a case in the lobby of City Hall a year ago, and likewise displayed in the lobby at the beginning of this holiday season. Last Thursday, Mayor Plone ordered maintenance to put it outside the building on the ground. The bizarre scenario offered by the mayor's office for doing this was that the donor of the indoor nativity set intended it to be outside, so therefore it was put there, approximately a year and a month afterwards. There comes a time when common sense has to prevail, and in this case, common sense was not used by Mayor Plone. Again, his actions resulted in insulting people as well as embarrassing many residents of this city. The lies, manipulations, and charades of Team Plone have been exposed for the past year and a half, and now the people are experiencing seeing the mayor with a lack of common sense. I've stated all along the need for a city psychiatrist at City Hall to protect the people from these lies and charades and manipulations of Team Plone. Now more so with this incident, it's clearly needed. Team Plone betrayed the people of this city in the past year, hocking them out by voting yes to a new 30-year tax abatement for convicted felon developer Charles Kutschner, which amounts to a lot of money. And yet Team Plone couldn't even have a respectable outdoor nativity scene at City Hall. The record is clear on this. I would like to express my sincerest thanks to the watchdogs for posting this shameful photo of the indoor manger being put on the grounds outside of City Hall. To the many who commented to the post, thank you. Because of your comments and efforts, the nativity scene was brought back indoors on the morning of December 6th where it had originally been. Congratulations, watchdogs. May the vigilance of the watchdogs and others in this city continue to monitor the happenings of this city. And to all the watchdogs who kept this manger in their holiday spirit, seasons greetings.
So I'd like to comment, if I may. Mr. Lepore, if I may, you used your time, so thank you very much, and now I'd just like to comment on that. First off, as I've said many times, Mr. Lepore has my cell phone number. I've offered him to give me a call at any time if he has any questions, but if he or others want to make assumptions and come to conclusions on Facebook that are inaccurate, I can't control that, and they're obviously welcome to do that, as well as Mr. Lepore or anyone else is welcome to come up to the podium here and say whatever they would like. But let me just tell you exactly what happened. The nativity scene was donated last year by someone who asked if he could donate something and put it outside, and I said yes, and thank you very much for the donation. When the donation arrived, it was a small piece, a small set. So we decided, or I decided, I should say, with the administration and talking to DPW that we would keep it up here, right outside the council chambers, where it was last year and where it was this year. The donor came up to me recently and he said, "Mr. Plone, please, I purchased this to put it outside. I really would like you to put it outside." I respected, you know, I honored his request because that's what he wanted to do. We put it outside at his request. There was all this, as, I'm not a Facebook follower, but people sent me some, you know, Facebook posts, and Mr. Lepore writes, was right, there were many of them. 24 hours later, I called up the donor, and I said to the donor, I expressed to the donor, I said, "You know, this is causing some controversy. I think we should bring it back inside." And he said, "Yes, please do," which we did, which is why it's here. And he expressed interest in donating something larger next year. So that's, that's the reality of it. If someone chooses to, you know, to me, what matters is to celebrate the holidays. We respect, I respect, and I think all of us do, respect all faiths. We, diversity is important to us, and we want to celebrate the spirit of the holidays for everyone. That's what we're all about. To me, it doesn't matter if a Christmas tree is larger than a menorah or a menorah is larger than a nativity scene, but I'm certainly sensitive to what every people say. And, look, in my opinion, it was a good call because we had it back, you know, back here. Again, the donor donated it, I wanted to honor his request, he totally understood when I said, you know, there were some things happening here on Facebook or on one of the websites, and he suggested, or I shouldn't say absolutely offered, but, you know, said, "I'll certainly consider buying a large one next year that we could put outside." Thank you.
I'd like to comment on your, oh, my name's Lyndas Winby and I reside at.
Could you lower it just a tad?
Okay. I'm Lyndas Winby and I reside at 157 Seventh Avenue in Long Branch. I want to respond to your comments that you just made, Mayor Plone. I saw that article, that on Facebook. I have a solution for that. If you could take, as small as it is, put it on something, something that's about this height, so it can be displayed right next to the menorah where you had it, it would be perfect. If you could put it up on something, say like a desk or something solid that you could just, like, just sort of like, display it. So, but I also want to say, I thank you for what you're doing for Long Branch. Now, I'm going to be a little more, be specific. The tree lights on the, down the street, beautiful, nice green and red, you know, ornaments hanging on the street. Small businesses that you've allowed to come into Long Branch. But I, what really got to me was when I saw you at the St. James Thanksgiving dinner. You sat across from me, and I observed you, you know, and I listened, there were people around you, there was a dark haired lady come up to talk to you, there was the guys that were sitting, eating, were talking to you. You're people's mayor, and you keep doing what you're doing. You're people's mayor, and you keep doing what you're doing, keep, and it's only going to get better for Long Branch. You know, you can only do so much, you know, there's obstacles, but you will find a way to work through those obstacles if you can, and I appreciate what you're done, and what you're doing, and what you will do.
Lyndas, thank you very much. I appreciate what you say.[745.12][745.12](applause) And I also want to say, just in terms of holiday decorations in general, if you notice for the past two years, we've tried, again, to celebrate the holidays for everyone. So, we have some new lights, and banners, and things, and the library, and the tree outside, and so forth, so we're trying. Thank you.
I can't get my five minutes from last week, could I? You see how that worked? I tried to be courteous to the crowd you invited. I go outside, I'm listening.
Could you state your name?
The officer closed the doors, we couldn't hear anything, and then you turned around and said, "Public portion," and I'm outside.
Mr. McNauli, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Ernest McNauli, born Monmouth Medical, 301 Second Avenue, raised. I live in Asbury Park now.
Thank you, sir.
Can I get my five minutes? That was not right. I didn't even make a big deal, but you closed those doors, you left us outside. I had a compendium ready. I guess that's a no, I'll take that as a no. You know what I find interesting? When I come here, and I listen, like, when you summate at the end, you're talking about picnic tables, Easter eggs, library stuff. I was just at a meeting with the Attorney General in Asbury, with a lot of people, even with your police chief. And you know when you hear me come up here and say, "Whoa, you know, Long Branch got big crime problems," and you say, "No, come on, look at Pier Village. This is a beautiful city. It's safe," right? Remember? Mayor say, "Oh, no," you know, "Well, kids can walk to school," all right? The Attorney General confirmed to me on TV, in the paper, that the reporting system used by the state police and the local departments, of which you're one, to the Attorney General, when they're put out, are valid, right? Now, Long Branch, out of 565 municipalities, Mr. Renone, what do you think you rank? Not that you care, but what do you think you rank? 25th. Neptune, 15th. And the city where I'm living, second, right? Now, we have to listen, be disparaged, have police chiefs assault us? Look, me, huh?
You think my door assaults lightly?
You don't think that Long Branch police and firemen are involved with Asbury Park police and firemen, when they come, and they get now arrested again this Saturday, and charged with official misconduct for coming to my hotel and homes with knives, police knives? Not two more felony charges, front page. Why can't I get anything about Long Branch in the link? Why not? Why can't I get anything in the sister paper in Asbury, in the coaster? Why not? Same owner, work with the same PIOs. Your PIO is Chief Robuck. You think he's going to let anything in, the paper that he doesn't want? You think the PIO, Mike Casey, in Asbury, who works with the police chief, is going to let anything in there? No, they say, "Oh, there's no bias hate crime. Long Branch is as safe as a Jesus and a manger." Well, you know what? In Monmouth County, people steal Jesuses out of mangers. I know, because they offered me one half-price sale at, I forget where it was, Target. I said, "Why so cheap? Somebody stole a baby Jesus." Are you kidding me? And then we come out with, can I get a one-minute, oh, wait, I got, I got 10 minutes? Sorry, it's a joke. Can I get a one-minute warning?
Sure.
So, now, I just donated two nativity scenes to Asbury Park. Took me five years. They only had a menorah up. They denied me every year. Now I just donated two $500 things. They put me through the hoops. Really? In Long Branch? You got like mini-nativity scene. That's okay for under a little Christmas tree somewhere. Well, you need something substantial, like Deal has, and all the surrounding municipalities. Come on. I'll donate it, how's that? Do I have a minute left?
Right now, you have one minute.
One minute left. I'm still concerned with where Mr. Renone emanates from. From what I'm told, his law firm is not that seasoned, and is very well politically connected to a Mr., what's his name, Frank something? Pallone? Yeah, maybe I'm wrong, but maybe I'm right.
You're wrong.
I'm wrong?
Sure.
Oh, really? How many attorney firms applied for your job?
I have no idea.
Yeah, well, how about none?
I can tell you how many attorneys in my firm are...
You know what, I don't, I don't want, you know, something, your rhetoric, I'm not interested.
No, I know, you, you just want to insult me, but you don't want an answer.
I'm not insulting you, I'm just telling you, I think you got the job like Zuba got the DPW job. Did he pass the test yet?
Yes.
Sorry. Does the mayor know what door he goes in, the convent at the Star of the Sea? Of course not.[1097.01][1097.01](phone ringing) That's my time?
Yes, sir.
Huh?
Time is up.
For the record, in regards to the AG meeting in Asbury Park, I was at that meeting, and the Attorney General said the reporting from some of the departments are different than other departments. He did not say they were equal. He said some report every single thing, and over-report, and some don't. I'm not justifying Long Branch and where they are at. He said that they will come up with a new system where everybody reports the same way. Everybody will report electronically, so there is no mix-up. That is what he said. He did not say that they're equal and 100% correct, as it was reported last year. You know, maybe I was at a different vein. I'm not debating with you, I'm just telling you what the facts are. You always ask me to talk. It's not after, I gave you your whole five minutes. Can I respond? Anyway, you can respond, no, you can't. No, I can't. Anyone else, anyone else would like to address the council this evening?
There you go.
Good evening. Patty Veraki, 246 Jerome Avenue, Oakhurst. I'm actually up to question Resolution 231-19 concerning the required, reducing the required performance guarantees for the Takanaesi developers. If you could explain that? And before I give up the rest of my five-minute allotment, I would also like to just comment that when it comes to political correctness, social media, religious decorations, or holiday representations, I think just very couple months ago, maybe, was there 12 chaplains that were appointed to, for all the religious representations here in Long Branch? Perhaps they could be utilized for some advice? And if someone could explain that resolution?
231-19, oh, so Takanaesi development. Did you want to know about that, Patty?
Yeah, what does that mean? I mean, the fact that the Takanaesi developers still had to, you know, finish the fish ladder, and there was still, I believe there was still some pending business that they had to finish with the Takanaesi. Are they now being given leniency, reducing the required performance? What does that mean?
No, it's, it's not that they're lessening. So, what happens when you get a performance guarantee is that there's a series of items, and an estimate as to what the cost is to do those items. So, when you reduce it, it would, it might mean that there's a list of 50 items, and 20 of them are done, are done already. So, when those 20 items are done to the satisfaction of the city engineer, the city engineer certifies that they've been complete, so they release that, that portion of the performance guarantee for those items.
Okay.
So, the other 30 items will still have, you know, the estimate of the cost for those 30 items are still bonded at 100%. So, it's not reducing, it's just reducing it for items that have already been completed. So, this is just a mechanism that the municipal Andrew's Law has for doing that.
Okay. And just for my, I guess, peace of mind, someone is still keeping an eye on the fish ladder and those obligations for protecting the wildlife?
The fish ladder. Oh. I don't know what their obligation is.
Well, I apologize that the city engineer isn't here, but, but the answer is that they are bonded items, and yes, they are, they are subject to regular inspection to make sure, and we won't release the bond until those are completed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Called in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Under resolutions, we could take the list of resolutions as a consent agenda?
So moved. Second. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vog?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the list of applications.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vog?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Miscellaneous for the good of the order, Councilman Viera.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for coming. I'd like to thank all the people, all the volunteers are helping with the warming center. They're in need, and a big shout-out to Bev Cruz, that's doing a wonderful job organizing them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vog.
So, I want to pick up on Anita's comment, just with a little bit more information, because Long Branch received really a wonderful, wonderful compliment on the work that was done. We should all be very, very proud, because our beach was really selected as a model for all other shore communities to develop accessible beaches using Long Branch as a model. It was a conversation that had taken place with Freehold or Arnon, with Senator Gopel, and with some of the other people, the Christopher Reeves Foundation. These are all people that are involved with issues of accessibility. Our Disabilities Committee, Dr. Selly is on that, and Anita is the chair, magnificent in the leadership of that project. So, like I said, Long Branch really has a lot to be, to feel, feel good about and be proud of. So, nice work, and also thanks, thanks to everybody for coming out. Have a good night.
Councilwoman Wittes.
I just would like to thank everyone for coming out this evening, and taking the time to attend our meetings, and for caring, and care for our city, and just wish you a great week, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Councilwoman Selly.
Over the weekend, we had a tree lighting between City Hall and the library. I was unable to attend, but when I came to the meeting tonight, I saw how beautiful the trees were. It does a lot for the city when you put up lights, and that shows you care about Long Branch. Thank you.
Mayor Pallone.
I just have a few, well, first off, I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening, and for your comments, and we have some new people here, so welcome and thank you. Just a few things on the little report here. So, I want to mention the Grow With Google event at the Public Library. If any of you attended, last week was a big success. Google offered free seminars to employees, job seekers, and nonprofits, and our Long Branch Library was chosen, Google has this Grow With Google event in a, one, in one location in each state, and so the Long Branch Public Library was chosen throughout the state to be the host for that event. So, I want to thank them, and of course, the entire staff at the Public Library for hosting it. Recreation's having a holiday toy drive, and it's collecting new toys, books, and stuffed animals. The drop-off is at the Long Branch Recreation Department at 231 Wilbur Ray Avenue, and thank you for everyone who has donated so far. We have, last year, I think we had, I don't remember the number, but it was several hundred children there, so thank you to all those who have donated, and donated, and those who could continue to. And speaking of that, Long Branch Recreation, in conjunction with the Long Branch Housing Authority, has the holiday party on December 19th. That's where the gifts are given away. And that's also at the Bucky James Community Center. That's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on December 19th, and all are, all are welcome to that. You may know we're having a holiday decorating contest this year for businesses and residential homes. That ends on December 20th. If you haven't submitted yet or applied, please check out our social media, find out how to enter, and prizes include gift cards and beach badges. On December 23rd, the Habat of the Shore is holding its annual giant menorah lighting at Pier Village next to the ice skating rink. That's from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., and there will be treats available to everyone who would like to attend that. And I'd also like to thank all those who've assisted in the last couple of weeks with the, with the warming center. The volunteers have all been great, Reverend Marisol, Bev Cruz, and I believe it's open again this evening. And literally, you know, one of the difficulties with that is, you know, code, we could often get the announcements a day before, sometimes even less than that, and so for, for all these volunteers to be coordinated on such short notice is really a, is really gratifying for those involved, and for all of us here in the community. So, thank you.
Okay, I would, as everyone else, certainly like to thank you all for coming out. I just want to reiterate that, as I said before, as long as I'm here as the council president, I will allow everyone to speak their entire five minutes, whatever their comments may be. I will not interrupt, because I, you know, what you're saying is important, whether we agree or not, as long as we're being respectful and keeping a meeting in an orderly fashion, I'm not going to interrupt. I will respond when you're done, if I think it's neat, necessary. So, it's not to wait until someone is done, so we can go back and forth. I just, just the way I feel, that you deserve the entire five minutes. You come here, you spend your time, and you wait your turn, and I want you to, you know, have the full time to say whatever it is that's on your mind. Thank you, and God bless you all. Get home safely. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.
Have a safe trip.
Is that ready?
Okay.
I got to check in. I told them, I promised that.